Okay, on the record.
Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of Hamilton City Council for July 22, 2020. It is 6 o'clock. We're here in City Council Chambers, 345 High Street in Hamilton. We do have two public hearings this evening, and one is the tax budget for 2021, and the other is proposed charter amendments. Those will be heard later on in the agenda. Let's do a roll call, please, sir.
Pullman.
Present.
Fear.
Present.
Vaughn.
Present.
Ryan.
Here.
Nab.
Present.
Brown.
Yes.
Moeller.
Present.
Okay, we're going to start off offering a prayer. The council member Tim Nab, please stand if you're able, and then be followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. We are gathered this evening to accomplish the work of our city, ensuring we continue to successfully represent all people of Hamilton in a fair and equitable outcome. Lord, please watch over those in service to our country, as well as our first responders, as they tend to the needs of our citizens, visitors, and businesses in our city. Please guide all elected and appointed officials in our city, as well as our city team, in all work and decisions, in continuing to lead Hamilton to remain a safe and desirable destination for all people to work, live, and play. Lord bless our families as we continue to deal with all the changes we have witnessed this year. We pray these petitions in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We are connected to our citizens tonight, live on TV Hamilton, and of course we thank TV Hamilton for that. This is a not open to the public meeting, except for certain exceptions, at being a public comment about agenda items, those who signed the speaking book, those who sent emails about agenda items, and those who speak at the public hearing. As I mentioned, those two public hearings will be heard later on. We are socially distant here. Number of people in this council chambers for the size of this room is a lot more sparse than what it usually is. But over the last couple of meetings, several meetings, we've been doing the meetings this way. So, we have first off a really special presentation, and it's recognizing Juneteenth in the city of Hamilton. There's a resolution that appears on our agenda, and I'll put the motion at this time regarding that agenda item.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we take the agenda item number 34 out of order and place a legislation on the floor for discussion and vote. I further move that a note be made upon the minutes that each member of council was furnished a printed copy of the legislation prior to its being considered at this meeting, and the council has received the staff report of agenda item number 34 and concurs in its recommendations.
Second. I think that became agenda item 35 when we added the street tax levy input. So it's 35. Is that your motion, 35?
Is it 35? Yeah, it was down here as 34.
Is that your second?
Second to legislation 35.
Vice Mayor Pullman, second by council member Nab, that we take 35 and move it up right now. So would you please read that into the record, agenda item number 35, and then council will proceed with addressing that particular legislation?
A resolution recognizing and declaring that every June 19 in the city of Hamilton, Ohio be celebrated as Juneteenth in perpetuity.
Mr. Mayor, are we voting on it now, too?
Yes, we are.
Mr. Mayor.
Council member Fear.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Motion to council member Fear, second by council member Ryan. Now, we are blessed to have a young man named Dion Otis here this evening. Dion, you want to come up to the podium and tell us what this is all about? First off, introduce yourself.
My name is Dion Otis, and I will be reading a Juneteenth statement.
First off, where do you go to school, Dion?
Riverview. Oh, well, I'm going to Wilson now.
Great. And for the record, you want to read us something right now about what you might want us to consider tonight, correct?
Yes.
Okay, please read it to us.
June 19, 1865, freedom rang for blacks held in slavery as they were now free. This day every year is known as Freedom Day or Juneteenth in African-American communities. For decades, celebrations have been held on this day, dating back to as early as 1895. Today, Juneteenth Day is seeing increases in celebrations in communities and countries across the world. It's a day to celebrate freedom and achievement for African-Americans. May acts is that you consider adopting Juneteenth as a day of celebration for the city of Hamilton.
Okay. Now, let's go back to, I believe it was June the 18th. Did you have the occasion to read a proclamation at the Brookerty Washington Community Center?
Yes.
Can we get some photos of that, Mr. City Clerk? I have never seen a young man so poised and able to read a proclamation, and very impressive, and I want to show a couple of photos to the audience. And who's that up there?
Me.
You're a baseball fan, too, right?
Yeah.
I know you're talking to Sammy about you playing baseball at the center, but so you're asking us to consider making Juneteenth in perpetuity forever a special day of celebration in the city of Hamilton?
Yes.
And that's also, I think, been called America's Second Independence Day, too. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Well, should I call you future President Otis, or just Mr. Otis?
Mr. Otis.
All right, I'm trying to put any pressure on you now. But you did an excellent job, and because you did an excellent job on June the 18th presenting that proclamation, you asked us, I told you we'd consider it. There's been a motion that your request be adopted. There's been a second. Had it be adopted? Any discussion amongst council at this time? Not Mr. Otis's request.
Great idea.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Are you ready for the vote?
Yes.
Okay. Do a roll call vote.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Moeller.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, 7-0.
Okay. Now, I gave you the staff report that you helped prepare. I'm going to give you a copy of the resolution right now, because this is becoming forever the votes for the city of Hamilton, Ohio. Is that okay with you?
Yes.
All right. There is your resolution.
Thank you.
Anything else you want to say to us?
No, no.
I think I will call you future president, if that's okay. So, that was adopted. That is now yours to keep with the proclamation. You're a leader, and we do thank you for your leadership, Dion Otis. Okay. Now, unless you want to stay for the whole rest of this meeting, you're able to leave right now.
But can we give him a round of applause?
Yeah.
Member Candace White is back in the audience with him, and he should be so proud of Dion. Like I said, poise, intelligence, man, he's just, he's already going places now. Thank you, Dion. Your mom can now buy you a nice big dinner.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nate. It's another standing up. Pretty cool. He deserves it. Okay, our next special presentation has to do with the coronavirus COVID-19 presentation update by Health Commissioner Kay Farrar.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and members of the city of Hamilton. I wanted to bring a little bit, something different tonight on the COVID-19 updates. So, most recently, you've seen that the governor has put out a set of indicators. So, you hear everybody talking about yellow, orange, red, and purple, and I wanted to explain that a little bit more, so you guys have a good understanding about what those colors mean and how they're driven. So, there are basically seven indicators that are used by the Ohio Department of Health. It's not a grade. You know, you're not, we have to get out of that mode. It's meant really to forecast and look at trends. So, you can think of it more as a weather forecast. So, it's not helpful to know and warn of a tornado when it's here. You got to tell somebody ahead of time. So, that's exactly what those indicators are for. So, there are five indicators that are considered leading indicators. The first one has to do with new cases per capita, and it is made to look at the last two weeks, and it's per 100,000 citizens, and that helps normalize it so that you can look at small, medium, and large counties, and you're still talking the same language and the same numbers. So, if the number is below 10 per 100,000, that's the lowest level that you can be at. If a county falls there, regardless of any other indicators, they will be yellow. So, that is what yellow means. Anything above 50 per 100,000 then becomes a flag, and the county is flagged under this indicator as having a 1, indicator positive. 50,000, 50 per 100,000 is moderately high incident according to the CDC. Greater than 100 per 100,000 is considered to be a high incident, a community spread. So, it just, again, it helps us to forecast. Indicators number two and three have to do with sustained increases in new cases, and it's based on a trend of five days over the overall cases by date of the swab, so the date that the test was actually taken. And it just helps us predict or project an increase in community spread. So, if there's a sustained increase, meaning five days out of the overall seven days, that every day goes up, 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 that's considered to be a sustained increase. Number three has to do with the proportion of cases that are not congregate cases. So, these exclude, this helps eliminate the disproportional skew that would happen if you had an outbreak in a long-term care facility, in a prison, in a jail. It helps to negate that, and it takes into account the last three weeks of data. So, if that is greater than 50% of your new cases, that negates the continued rising trend. Indicators four and five have to do with syndromic indicators. So, public health has always done syndromic surveillance of different things. One of them is emergency room and outpatient visits. So, when you come into the emergency room, you're triaged by a nurse, and you know, you tell them basically what you're there for. So, if you enter into either an emergency room or an outpatient visit, and the main reason you're there are for COVID-like symptoms, that will trigger these two syndromic indicators. Those are based on a five-day period to mean a sustained increase. So, it's not just that one day you see an increase. It has to be five days in a row for both of those. So, one is for emergency room visits, and the other is for just outpatient visits, so to doctors' offices and the like. And it's, it just is, it helps us know that there's an early warning that people are sick enough to go to the doctor office or seek care, and they're exhibiting COVID-like symptoms, the cough, the headache, the fever, et cetera. Then, there are two what we call lagging data syndromes, and those are sustained increases in new COVID-19 hospital admissions. A county receives a flag if there's at least a five-day period where there's sustained growth of new hospital admissions of COVID-like illness in the last seven days. And number seven is the intensive care unit, looking at ICU bed occupancy. It is reflected for both COVID and non-COVID capacity. So, it's just looking at how many beds are filled. And a county gets a flag if it's over 80% of the beds are filled. Now, this is the one indicator that if you listen to the governor's talk today, that he's changing going forward. So, the ICU one will now be both 80% increase in the last three days, plus 20% of them have to be COVID patients. So, he's going to make it more COVID-specific for ICUs. Then, what does, what do those all equate to? If you have zero-to-one indicator, you're yellow. It reflects that there's community spread happening. You just need to follow the health orders. At level two, when you're orange, there's two to three indicators that are being triggered, and you have to exercise a higher degree of caution. Again, it's that forecast. It's telling you some things are going on. It's not looking good. Level three red is four to five indicators are triggered, so there's very high exposure and spread, and they're asking us to limit our activities. On a level four, purple, six to seven indicators are triggered. That means there's severe exposure going on and spread, and you really only should leave home for supplies and services. So, we've asked, and the governor's not going to put out orders to lock us down at 6:00 to 7:00. He really wants this to be a local kind of look at. This is just another tool in the tool belt. It's not the end-all, be-all. It's not the only thing we look at. We look at many more things, but it gives us kind of a better picture of where we're at. So, as you probably all heard, a week, two weeks ago, we were red with a star, meaning he was really worried we were going to purple. Well, instead, we actually did better. So, that order to wear masks across the board seems to have lowered the data and the numbers coming in. So, it was looking good, and we lost our asterisks. We're really just red. And when I say just red, we don't want to stay red. We really want to come down to orange. That's why we started the campaign, hashtag getting to orange, asked everybody to take pictures of themselves. If they're tweeters, they should tweet that hashtag and then put a picture of themselves with the mask on. We really do want to continue to lower the data, and I think we're making headways. I really do. I'm cautiously optimistic where our numbers look now. I think a lot of it was post-protest, and a lot of movement and kind of uncontrolled movement of people where there was nearness without masks, and with that also then comes shouting, which is another super emitter, so that if you're yelling at each other. And there were protests across the state, including at the public health orders. We all saw them, you know, transmit on TV, so we didn't help our own cause as well. Current data for the Butler County and the city of Hamilton. So, this was last updated by me on 7/20. It's hard for me to get exact data anymore, because we're so busy, we don't get to call each other like we used to. But on 7/20, the county as a whole has 2,174. That was a one-week increase of 292 cases. The city of Hamilton has 297, and the one-week increase was 25. So, taking some data off of the Butler County EPI report, which was last posted on the 14th, he always does those, and they get released on Thursday. Unfortunately, our meetings are always on Wednesday, so I can't give you the most up-to-date stuff. But there's the division by race. So, non-Hispanic whites are at 39.5%. Unknown or refused, 19.9%. Hispanic, 16.5%. Non-Hispanic blacks, 14.6%. Asians, 5.7%, and then other, 3.7%. This is also off of the EPI report from last week. Hospitalized, there were 249. County as a whole hospitalized patients, 12.5%. If you remember from last time I reported, that's actually an improvement. So, we were, we were always running somewhere around 16, 17%, so it's gone down. And the reason it's gone down, our new cases are younger, and they're not getting hospitalized, which is a good thing. ICU admissions, there's been 27, 1.4%. That also is a diminish from the last time. That was running more like 3%. Required intubation, 21 cases, 1.1%. Confirmed deaths, there are 52 for the county, which includes the three Hamilton deaths that we had. The youngest death was 43, and the oldest was 101. The National Guard testing that I talked to you guys about has been completed. They did three of our nursing homes. The other nursing homes have decided to do their own testing. They could do either or. I don't have all of those results back yet, but I do have the National Guard testing back. They did three of our long-term care facility. They tested all staff members, and we only had one positive PRN STNA. So, not bad. We did pretty good on that testing. I was very pleased. In other testing, we also then went back and did all the residents at one of our long-term care facilities this last Friday. They did their own testing. They sent the tests, I provided them with the swabs. We sent them to UC. We don't have the results back yet, but we did test every resident minus the two that refused. Some other information regarding positive tests right now, the under 20 is about 11.6% of our positivity. 20- to 34-year-olds represent 26.9%. 35- to 49-year-olds are 25.3% of our positives. Age 50- to 64 are 21.5% of our positives, and 65 and older, 14.7%. This is a slide from the state, and this is up to date as of today. This is a good slide to watch for the key indicators, and that's on that coronavirus.ohio.gov. So, this slide shows that 21-day trend, and I don't know if any of you guys have ever played with it or not, but if you slide on that yellow bar, when you're on it, it will tell you what date that was and what the raw number was. So, for cases, the highest you see were at 1,679. That was, that peak happened on 7/17. For the deaths, that peak that is most recent was 42 deaths on 7/19/20. On hospitalizations, that peak of 160 was on 7/15/20, and on ICU admissions, that 36 sat on 7/15/20. So, as you can see, that's kind of, you know, where we hit that really high mark when we were the red with the asterisks, and he was worried about us. So, overall, the state as a whole has come down, which has resulted in his new orders, which were released just a little while ago. If you got a chance to watch his presser, he is optimistic to a degree, as we are in public health, that the statewide, the mandate to the red counties had a positive effect, and we're seeing it, and we're experiencing it, which led him to put out a statewide mask order. So, the order goes into effect tomorrow at 6:00 PM. Again, it's because the preliminary data show that the rate of transmission in the counties where the masks were mandated has slowed significantly. So, the order is for all individuals to wear masks or facial coverings in public at all times when they are indoor, other than a residence. They are outdoors but unable to maintain six feet of social distance, or they're riding, driving, operating, public transportation of any kind, or ride-sharing. So, I know the last time when the red came out and there was orders, a lot of businesses and et cetera called because they're concerned about the at-all-times-when-not-in-a-residence. I interpret that still, and I still do today. If you're sitting in your office alone, or you're in, and you have dividers, you're in a cubicle, you're able to take your mask off. It's those congregate areas when you're walking around. That's really what that's meant to be. The exclusions to the mask mandate that went into effect, it requires, it does not require 10-year-olds, and it requires everyone 10 and older to wear a mask, but it excludes the younger ones. So, it also excludes people with medical conditions or disabilities, people who are actively exercising or playing sports, officiants at a religious service, anybody actively involved in public safety. So, please fire those people when they're actively involved in something like fighting a fire. Do not wear a mask. And then, who are actively eating or drinking. That's all I have. I'd love to entertain any questions. I went over kind of a big variety of stuff, but I wanted to have everyone have an understanding of that, the indicators, and what red actually means. And again, he's going to leave that up to locals. It looks like he's going to, it's just a tool for us to use.
Very thorough, very informative. Any questions for our Health Commissioner Kay Farrar? Thank you.
Thanks.
Now, there has been a request that was a while back to discuss masks in the city of Hamilton, and it's going to be going like a council-only discussion, unless somebody asks a question for Kay. I think I mentioned council member Ryan, does you want to make any kind of comment at this time?
No, sir.
Okay, no, sir. We really do have to respect COVID-19. I mean, it's, it's effects on seniors, it's effects on young people, some of which you don't even have pre-existing conditions. We're all smart. We just need to act smart, listen to those. In the science field, individuals need to respect individuals, groups need to respect groups. We will get through this. You know Governor DeWine is trying to save lives, and he actually has saved lives. Any other comments about masks, about the mandate that goes in to affect officials against July 23rd at 6:00? Is that right?
Tomorrow at 6:00 PM.
Okay. All righty. So, we'll just keep facing this without a day at a time. Our next special presentation is street levy input presentation, and there's going to be some information put on the screen up there about how to cast your vote for which street needs to be paved or repaired. We've got that opportunity until August 7. City Clerk, will you give us the presentation?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Street levy input. So, as council is aware, the street levy did pass this past spring, and as a requirement of the levy, council had passed a resolution stating that we would be taking input from the city residents of the city of Hamilton about which streets that they wanted the money to be used for. That input process is ongoing right now, of course, due to COVID-19. It isn't as in-person as we'd like it to, but we do have three great ways for you to participate in that input program. We've got number one, you fill out the survey online at www.hamilton-ohio.gov/streetlevy. Now, you can fill out the survey right there, and you can implement, as we discussed last month, select exactly which streets you want. You select your top three, and in what block do you want that to really focus on? So, it helps us out if you just say grand- focus on. So it helps us out. If you just say Grand Boulevard, it helps us narrow down to which point of Grand Boulevard you really want the most. And that is really a great way to implement us. If you don't have access to a computer or the internet, you can always leave us a voicemail at 513-785-7155. That is a voicemail line. You can come on, state your name, your address, and your top three streets. Leave it for us. We check it quite frequently. We add you into the survey pile. And then option number three, fill out the form that comes in with your utility bill. Everybody in utility bill that's getting one of the city of Hamilton has a bill insert going out with a paper form of how you can participate. Or if for some reason you don't get a utility bill, or have lost it, or anything else, you can actually come into our lobby at 345 High Street, fill out a paper application. We have them out in the lobby and put it into the ballot box. We'll go in and we check it out and we put it again, put it in with all the rest of the results. So those are the three ways you can participate and get your Street Levy input. So let's see where we're at right now. The feedback has been steadily coming in. However, we would like to get a lot more. We're going to accept feedback all year round, but, and here's the big but, by Friday, August 7th, we need that input if you want that street to be voted on for the 2021 paving program. That doesn't mean we're still not going to take the input on August the 8th. It just means that that is our cutoff for next year's program. This levy is for 10 years, so we're going to be soliciting feedback for quite some time. But if you really have a priority street that you want to express right now, we need it before August 7th, in one of the three ways I just mentioned. So, how is the polling look so far? Well, we've heard from about 500 residents all across Hamilton, 17 neighborhoods, and each neighborhood is going to receive a proportional share of its funding. Streets will ultimately be reviewed and prioritized by the neighborhood. However, citywide leading streets so far are these top 10. Of course, we've got Grand Boulevard receiving three times the number than the second option in terms of votes. Number two, Tyler'sville Road. Three, Park Avenue. Four, Corwin Avenue. Five, Northwest Washington Boulevard. Six, Eaton Avenue. Seven, Cleveland Avenue. Eight, Campbell Avenue. Nine, Springvale Drive. And 10, Sanders Drive. Those are the top 10 vote getters at this time. Again, we're going to take a look about how the levy dollars need to be distributed, but those is what is trending from the people of Hamilton so far. But we want that feedback in one of those three ways, online, via the phone, or good old-fashioned paper copy in this building. That is from the Department of Neighborhoods. Any questions from council?
Any questions for Mr. Garukas involving the Street Levy input?
Mr. Mayor, Nick, I'm hopeful you'll be able to answer this. The Street Levy campaign for 10 years is effective January 1st, 2021. Am I correct?
You are correct.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, keep voting. All three ways to vote. And that leads to, they can fill some out in the lobby here too, I guess. Is that correct?
Right, that's option three, so.
Three or four ways. Get them in there and let's just see how they end up ranking by total number. Thank you for your presentation. Regarding the audience and citizens, we've been posting in the last several meetings how we handle the audience of citizens. Only those who wish to speak regarding specific agenda items will be permitted to give their comments in person. If citizens wish to have an issue addressed by council or administration, they should email those questions or comments to the city clerk at the address posted in the agenda. City clerk may read the comments into the record during the appropriate council meeting. If comments are submitted far enough in advance of an upcoming meeting, you may receive an official city response, which will also go into the record, but you might get that response actually prior to the meeting itself. You must still provide name and address for the record. Okay. We have one individual who wishes to speak at this time on an agenda item and it is, you're already there. Introduce yourself, Dan.
Yeah, Dan Corey, Butler County Transportation Improvement District Director. I'm the new Dave Spiny. Here, just one to introduce myself. I've been working on the Transportation Improvement District in Morin County and Greg Wilkins got together with his counterpart, Neil Tunisson, and decided to utilize me together. So I'm being chaired. It's called, was that called Better Governance? So, you know, but I've been able to do some things over there and bring in my expertise over here. Tonight, before the council is the new Hamilton, North Hamilton Crossing, the new project. South Hamilton Crossing was a success with the partnership that was established between the Butler County TID and the city of Hamilton. We would like to repeat that again. Your staff has been great to work with, Alan and Jim and Rich. And so what we would like to do is continue that relationship and make another successful project with this one being more regional in nature. I'm here to answer any questions. I know your agenda item number 34, so if you need me to stick around, I'm happy to, but I was trying to hope that I could answer them now.
I want to get the answers now. Any questions that you have?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Finally get to meet you. We've talked on the phone with the TID, so it's.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Pullman, so yeah, it's finally good to meet you. Hopefully we get together again soon. I need everybody else on this. Absolutely. We're taking my calls.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Is there any questions? I know this is a very important project for the city and I know there's a lot of hurdles. I plan on being like Dave Spiny, sticking around and see it to completion. And it'll be a long process, but hopefully a rewarding, successful one that will serve the businesses and residents of Hamilton for many, many years.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Corey?
Welcome.
Yes, welcome former board member from the TID.
Thank you. And South Hamilton Crossing was a great partnership, got it done.
Yes.
We hope partnership for North Hamilton Crossing is as successful, gets it done.
Yes, sir. Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Good luck. Okay, no one else sign that the audience and citizens book?
Mr. Mayor?
Please. Let you, you read them into the record. The email's correct, that's right. Sorry about that.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Mayor, as you stated earlier, these were emails that city council has received for audience and citizens that were not agenda items. I believe there are, let's say four.
Okay.
All right. First one, this might be a little out of date now because of the recess and then recent topic of Governor DeWine and the mask order, but it was sent in and we are going to read it. "Good afternoon. Unfortunately, I'm unable to make it to the mandatory mask meeting that city council have due to work. However, as a resident of Hamilton, I wanted to weigh in. Please consider simply strongly recommending that city of Hamilton wear face masks within the city instead of making it mandatory. Judging by the current COVID death numbers, which have decreased significantly since April, it does not make sense to force people into wearing masks. People tend to fall ill during the fall, through the winter, with colds, flus, and other illnesses. People, including myself, are beginning to get fed up with the back and forth mandates, so not only by the governor, but by the WHO and the CDC, which has admitted to erroneous errors in testing counts. They have counted many tests twice, as there are two different types of tests. Just because there are more cases does not mean that people are going to get sick. Coronavirus tests cannot distinguish yet between COVID-19 and four other types of coronavirus, including the common cold. I and my two children had COVID symptoms in December and January, and many people were sick with COVID symptoms in December through February at their schools and my work, but had recovered within a few days to two weeks without hospitalizations. My boyfriend, who lives with us, did not get sick. His parents and my parents, who are all elderly, did not get sick, even though we had been in contact with them. Please do not keep instilling fear in people by requiring masks and basing everything off speculation. Encourage good hygiene and hand washing, social distancing, and encouraging people that if they would like to wear a mask, that they are free to do so. But our, what we are seeing now is that people in each of, that people are at each other's throats because some people are wearing them and some people are not. And some people may have reasons for not wearing them. It's causing more harm than good in an already vital environment. I feel that the people ultimately will do what is right for themselves and their families, but that they will push back strongly if forced to do something that they feel is unnecessary, like wearing a mask everywhere they go. Ohio has done very well in keeping our numbers low. Please keep that in mind when council convenes and allows our citizens the freedom to choose. That is what America is all about, especially when we have been doing so very well with our COVID numbers. Thank you. Have a great afternoon. Respectively, Lisa A. Bauer." And that was received for council about approximately two weeks ago before most of the mandates came out from Governor's Office. All right, second request. "To all concerned, I live in Southern Hills. Recently, I received a bill for the sidewalk and gutter work done in front of my house. This work was completed last November and four months later, a levy was passed to add a street and gutter repair to our property taxes. That would have actually been only three months, but the pandemic delayed the vote. So please explain to me why, with a short three-month delay, you feel necessary to charge us for the gutters that no other homeowners will have to pay for out of their own pockets after this. Don't you think that is absurd, especially considering that we are in the middle of a pandemic? People are losing their jobs, their incomes, their health insurance, their houses, and they cannot feed their families. Getting the stimulus checks or unemployment checks to come through or dealing with prices rising and on all essentials of life. And basically, we are being driven into poverty? Since the work has finished such a short time before the passage of the levy, this last round of gutter repairs should be forgiven. But you felt it necessary to send us a huge bill in the middle of a pandemic and it took you seven months to even get the bill to us. Why is it okay for you to take seven months to send us a bill and yet not forgive the three short months between the end of the work and the passage of the levy? This is the kind of city you run? A heartless, thoughtless city that gives no consideration to the people in the middle of a pandemic and economic hard times? Seriously, you need to reconsider this decision. Cheryl Thomas, 1332 Ocamont Avenue, Hamilton, Ohio."
Has been referred to somebody for a response?
That it has. And I just looked up that she is part of the 2018 Street Resurfacing Repair Project. So the billing process that Cheryl was referring to, the work is done for the whole program and it's then goes into a billing process. So if you were at the beginning of the program, you might have had the work done several months ahead before some of your neighbors or other streets in the neighborhood that actually received the bill then. So it looks like poor timing, but the work was already billed out previously and as discussed, council did put that action in for the 2019 program. But she will get a written response as well.
She'll get a response. Good. Okay. Thank you.
Hello, this is Chris Marcello from the Civil Service Commission and Historic Hamilton. I've had discussions with multiple people, some on council, about the fate of the log cabin on C Street. I would like it's brought to the city's attention to keep it on their radar for some future purpose and restoration. Thank you very much, Chris Marcello. Date of July the 7th. "Dear members of council, I want to express my thanks for the great fireworks show on the 4th of July. We watched from Miami Hamilton's fine parking lot and had a bird's eye view. We listened to WH, WMOH for the soundtrack. The display was perfectly received from that vantage point, so thank you for a bright spot in some dark days. Sincerely yours, Mary C. Fisher of 1358 Glenbrook Drive, Hamilton, Ohio." And that's all I've received.
Okay, thank you. My name is on council. I've received compliments of the fireworks. So great when somebody sends a letter in and Mary Kay's been actively involved in this city for a wide number of years.
Well, and Mr. Mayor, I'd also like to thank TV Hamilton because we were out of town for 4th of July and we got to watch it from South Carolina and you really did a great job filming it. So thank you very much.
Okay. We now move to the consent agenda. That includes approval amendments, all staff reports, receiving final council information, caucus reports. Information report, I pushed through two of them, the June 2020 monthly financial report, the June 2020 monthly investment report. We will not have a committee hold this evening. So I'll set the motion regarding the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
House Member Bond?
I move that with the exception of the items so noted, council received the reports of the consent agenda and concur in the recommendations.
Second. Motion to move, Councilmember Bond, seconded by Vice Mayor Pullman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. We're not going to read the titles of these or ask Nick to read them. We're just going to bunch them together. Three of them had to do with city contracts for services. Three of the caucus agenda items had to do with planning department actions. Six had to do with the side lot program. Three of those various ordinances, including parking generally, solicitor license application requirements, and recreational small bonfires seen in people's backyards. And also there's recommendation, a letter written from the Charter Review Commission. So that takes care of the consent agenda. We now go to public hearings. I'll set the motion that the regular meeting be recessed and the following public hearing take place.
So moved.
Second. Motion to move, Councilmember Nab, seconded by Councilmember Brown. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. It is 6:46. So we go into the first public hearing that we have. And if you want to read into the record, Mr. City Clerk.
A public hearing regarding adopting the tax budget for the city of Hamilton, Ohio for the fiscal year 2021.
Anyone in the audience wish to be heard at this public hearing involving the tax budget fiscal year 2021? Introduce yourself to the record.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, my name's Dave Jones. I'm the Finance Director for the city. Give you guys a brief overview of the tax budget.
Thank you.
So the tax budget's an annual requirement. We do it every July. And basically, what we have to do is we have to take the beginning fund balance or our estimated fund balance and our estimated resources for the upcoming year and submit them to the county auditor as he is the head of the Budget Commission for Butler County. That, that gives us an idea of the maximum amount that we can, you know, appropriate for the upcoming fiscal year. Here are the dates that we do this. I want to, you know, qualify this. It wasn't a formal extension due to the meeting being 7/22. I emailed down to the auditor's office and they said they were fine with us turning it in by the end of the week. Basically, the Budget Commission reviews the estimated revenue and the fund balance and, and we cannot over-appropriate a fund. So what you guys do in December is you're passing an appropriations ordinance or hopefully passing an appropriations ordinance. And as a whole, the Budget Commission looks at that and we can't go negative. So they're looking at it. They're filling out what's called an estimated certificate of resources and that's the maximum amount that we can appropriate when we come to you guys to pass that hopefully in December. They give us what's called do not exceed certificates to make sure that we do not exceed that amount. The auditors look at them. So it's a very controlled environment with not only city council looking at it, but the Butler County Budget Commission. So brief overview. I don't know if you guys have any questions.
This is actually a big part of the budgeting process because of the amount of taxes coming in.
It's not only taxes. It's every fund except for like sinking funds and things of that nature. And yeah, it's basically the revenue side and the carryover fund balance side. It's the beginning, basically your beginning of your budget process.
Any questions for our Finance Director, Dave Jones?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a public hearing booked on this particular public hearing? Mr. City Clerk?
There was, Mr. Mayor, and no one has signed.
Okay, great. Then anyone in council wish to be heard at this public hearing or wish to make a motion?
So moved.
Motion to move, Councilmember Brown, the public hearing to be closed. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion to move, Councilmember Brown, seconded by Councilmember Nab. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. It is 6:49. And that public hearing is closed. We now go into the next public hearing. If you want to read that into the record, Mr. City Clerk?
A public hearing relative to multiple proposals for charter amendments as submitted to city council by the Charter Review Commission.
There are so many audiences which is to be heard at this public hearing. Sign to book or is hereby invitation. Come to the podium and introduce yourself, please.
Good evening. I'm Ted Pickrell and had the honor of chairing this commission. I thank you for that opportunity and I thanks, also go to my fellow commissioners for their service and thanks to the dedicated city employees who assisted us, especially to Nick, who managed. Nick, who managed all of our meetings and provided us with materials to conduct the review. And I'd also like to thank the citizens who provided input to the commission. And also, thank you to city council for earlier in this meeting, receiving our letter advocating methods to be identified to increase the gender, racial, and other forms of diversity of the membership of city boards, commissions, and committees. Thank you. The commission considered changes proposed by city administrators and leaders and fellow commissioners with the opportunity for public input at every meeting. The commission met for several months and recommends several changes for clarification, to remove ambiguity, or to provide guidance in areas such as the rules of council, financial interests, contracts, when resolutions take effect, civil service rules, charter review, the city auditor, council member status as city employees, and recognizing the role of the city manager. The commission also recommends a name change from civil service and personnel to human resources, an allowance for the electronic publication for public hearings, stating that there is an economic development department and a director of economic development, creating a provision for council to propose charter amendments for matters immediately hindering the city, and an expansion of the equal employment opportunity to include sexual orientation and gender identity. The commission has also recommended a change to 12.03 regarding the Fire Force. While most of the changes recommended were with the unanimous approval of the commission, actually, I believe all were, with the exception of the one regarding the Fire Force, the change regarding the Fire Force was not unanimous and was visited several times, with input from the fire chief, community members, and firefighters. The commission viewed this topic as one of significant importance regarding public safety, with some expressing that rather than the commission determining whether change is needed or not, that instead, city council should have the opportunity to hear further discussion on this proposal to allow city council to directly weigh all factors and input in order to make the final decision on this very important safety issue. The ultimate vote on this recommendation was six in favor with four extensions. I know now that Nick will inform you of all the recommendations and provide background and information on each. Again, we are thankful to have been given this opportunity to serve the great city of Hamilton. Thank you.
We thank you. A lot of work went into these proposed amendments, and that you spent all the time, Zoom meetings, and, and thank you for your dedication to the public hearing.
It was an honor. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I want to go over these recommendations, Mr. City Clerk.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I am going to be very honest with council. This is not going to be an interesting presentation. It's going to be very dry, and hopefully, not as long as I hope it is.
For record, we have hard copied documents of each emergency ordinance, those proposed recommendations.
All right. As Chair Pickrell stated, the Charter Review Commission, this was the fifth year since the last one, and they went through the 36-page charter with the recommendations about what is here tonight in front of city council. There were a commission set up by a city council of 13 members chaired by Mr. Pickrell, vice chaired by David Stark, and we had these 13 individuals who all residents of the city go over the charter. We did have two resignations towards the end of Jennifer McQueen and Kevin Kessler for the last two meetings, but ultimately, I still have their names up there because they were here for the vast majority of these recommendations and meetings. Commission's missions and procedure. Their mission is, like I said, stated to review the charter and make recommendations to city council. The commission met to discuss proposals and recommendations to the city council. The entire charter was up for review or discussion. Commission decided on how it wished to conduct their own meetings on their own merit, and city administration and officials were given notice of the commission and submitting specific proposals for consideration. Proposals received by the law department prior to each inspection. At the commission meetings, the city administration presented their proposals to the commission. The commission asked questions, accepted the proposed changes, amended them, or rejected the proposal altogether. Public organizations and commissioners also submitted proposals or feedback for charter selections at meetings. Commissioners were encouraged to speak with members of the public for feedback versus every possible item that they are discussing. Commission voted on recommendations, revisions to the charter, and have submitted to city council. That is what is in front of you in the packet here tonight, and we're going to go through those. Purpose, proposed recommendations have been turned into emergency ordinances, and in some cases, have been paired together based on the topic. Any ordinances passed by city council will be submitted to the Butler County Board of Elections for the November 3, 2020 election. There is a 60-day submission deadline for the election, and it is recommended that council vote on any proposed ordinances to the charter by the August 12, 2020 city council meeting. I'm going to say that again. I am not asking city council to vote on anything tonight regarding this. We are going to be soliciting for amended feedback or any kind of direction from city council, and we're going to get into that right now. Council's role and council's authority in all this. Charter Review Commission is basically a recommendation body to you guys about what they think that the city would need or want. Council, your role is to either accept, amend, or reject the recommendations of the Charter Review Commission and submit the amendments recommended by the Charter Review Commission to the electors in an original or revised form. That just means you could take whatever the Charter Review Commission proposed at face value, amend it, and then send it to the election in November. Council may split the question and separate proposed charter amendments out in various ordinances. You can see there are 14 charter ordinances on your agenda tonight. There is about 20-ish sections of the charter that have been proposed to be amended. The law department and the Office of the City Clerk, we paired up the ones that we thought were similar in nature or were together for a clerical nature and well. We've split them into basically 14 different varieties of topics. Council can decide to split certain sections apart and have me write additional ordinances or have them grouped together. That will be important because it will determine how many questions we have on the November ballot. You could combine them all into a single ballot issue if council so wished, or you can have them as 14 different questions, or add questions as we go along. Council may decide to keep any approved amendments and separate them, as we discussed. Charter Review Commission's recommendations. So I'm going to run through each of the ordinances. Council can stop me if they've got questions, or we can ask questions at the end. There will be comments from the public, I know from the, already from the book outside. Article 3, so this is agenda item number 14. Article 3, the council, section 3.01a, 4, powers of council, and article 5, section 5.09, number of assistants and subordinates, how fixed. The purpose of this amendment, if approved, this will give the city manager the authority to set the number of employees in the city departments to city manager and, city manager the authority to set the number of employees in city departments to the city manager and not the city council, because it's city manager's responsibility to handle the administrative duties of the city. The council does not need to involve itself with this endeavor, basically taking that authority from council and giving it to the city manager. The reasoning of this, the Charter Review Commission discussed that, that this duty seemed more like an administrative duty of the city manager rather than a power of council. Since council can establish departments by legislation, it should be up to city administration to tell the council how many employees will be necessary to accurately staff a department. Council already approves the annual budget, so they can appropriate funds as they see fit to the department staffing already if there was an issue. These are the redlined sections, and basically, what I'm actually asking council to consider at each one of these ordinances. This is the exact wording that is in the charter or will be proposed in the charter if councils were to so pass the amendment. Items in black are how it's presented now currently in the charter. Items in red are words being added, and items in red with a line cross is, we're getting rid of the language, not going to be a part of it anymore. The main section of that purpose is actually in 509, where it does the action of giving that authority to the city manager of appointments and not the council. Section 3.01, powers of council, that is more of a complimentary section in that. I would not recommend splitting this, only because if they are, if one were to pass from the voters and the other one not, it would create a little bit of a legal loophole for us in the charter. But that is the proposal for agenda item 14. Then on number 15, article 3, the council, section 3.05, compensation of officials. Purpose, if approved, language relating to the election of 2000 will be removed, and council members will be closer defined as employees of the city. Reasoning, the commission felt that this language relating to the election of 2000 was unnecessary, and that by referencing council as employees of the city, it may provide greater clarity to the city insurance provider when discussing providing benefits to city council members through their health system. So the first part is all of this language that has the red taken out in the bottom. That's all currently in the charter, and it references the election of 2000 when there was competing proposals on the ballot. It really doesn't have much to do with anything now, just because the election has passed and it was 20 years ago. The Charter Review Commission felt that it was unnecessary to keep that language in there. The part in red at the top, under the compensation of officials, as compensated members of the city council, elected officials shall be considered employees of the city of Hamilton. Again, that is for our health insurance provider, just to help clear up that this is something that the city council is entitled, that we offer health benefits to members. This section, even though it is titled compensation of officials, there was no proposal to change your current pay. I'm going to say that again. There is no proposal to change council's current pay of $300 per year or $25 per month. That is what that section does. Agenda item number 16, article 3, section 3.07, rules of council, 3.08, quorum voting members, article 5, section .04, council not to interfere with appointments or removals, and article 18 miscellaneous provisions, section 18.02, financial interest in contracts, and et cetera. This one is easier to thought of as council's ethics ordinance. These are all issues that were considered ethical issues and were put together. If council wants to split the question on this, that is up to your prerogative. The purpose, if approved, council's ethical standards will receive further guidance as established by the State of Ohio Ethics Commission, clarify what removing a council member looks like and when a council member should abstain. The reasoning behind this, the Charter Review Commission heard a proposed amendment to article 3, the council, all the other ones I previously mentioned, as a result of Commissioner Robert Weil sharing his past experiences as a member of city council and how he felt further guidance to the council should be provided by the charter. Additionally, it was felt that direct examples of family members should be provided in the charter, so there was less confusion regarding when a member of council should abstain from a vote due to a potential conflict of interest. Sections 3.07, .08, 5.04, and 18.02 had amendments proposed to reflect these changes throughout. This issue was raised by Mayor Pat Bowler. Commissioner Robert Weil wished that I read this statement on his behalf regarding his proposals. Mr. Mayor and members of council, it was an honor for me to serve as the, on the recent Charter Review Commission, the work of which you will be considering this week. I write this email explanation of the changes made to 3.07, 5.03, 5.04, and 18.02, as I initiated these editorial changes. The emphasis on these sections is to stipulate that council not be the beneficiary of city contracts nor interfere in the domain of the city manager's relative employment issue. While language has been in the charter for decades, the prescribed remedy for council violation was a mixture of undefined terms and inconsistent consequences. These editorial changes simply bring into focus the original intent of the charter sections, that council is accountable for each other's conduct relative to these two sections. I feel that these clarifications will help ensure the public's trust in the elected body, and I fully support these changes. Best regards, Roberts Weil. First section, 3.07, rules of council. This is proposed, like Commissioner Weil had stated, that he wanted it a little bit more clear and have the line about disorderly conduct appropriate for the removal to include but not limited to conduct in violation of the State of Ohio ethics laws. There is a State of Ohio's Ethics Commission. There is a process that is evaluated for financial disclosure every year that council has to go through, as you are aware. They felt that having the reference to Ohio, the State of Ohio ethics laws would give our local charter a little bit more inst behind it. Also, it was discussed that they did not particularly favor what expelled means in terms of a member. You'll see that throughout a couple of these sections. Expelled is never really defined. In this case, it says that council may expel, remove for the duration of their elected term or appointed term. They're referring to a council member. Expel didn't have a definition of when does that end? Is it, you're expelled for the next two months? Is it your whole term? Are you never allowed to be on council again? They wanted to make that a little bit more clear, that it is talking about your appointed 3.08, this is discussing the financial interests in terms of when to abstain. Basically, council votes on piece of legislation, and it is all throughout the city in terms of a variety of contracts. This, the, the commission felt better defined when they need to abstain from that, when there are financial interests of a council member's, his or her immediate family are involved, or when the laws of Ohio require a member to abstain. The definition, immediate family means spouse, child, or stepchild, grandchild, parent, stepparent, grandparent, brother, sister, parents, or stepparents of spouse and grandparents of spouse. That is defined. 5.04, council not to interfere with appointments or removals. This section is discussing the appointments and removals primarily through the city manager's office. The remove language would be, any violation provisions of the section by a member of council shall be a misdemeanor. They would like to strike conviction of which shall be immediately forfeit the office of members so convicted. Again, it's that forfeit of office, kind of what we talked about a little bit. This shall be considered disorderly conduct under charter section 3.07, and shall result in a member being removed under said section by a vote of not less than five members. So discussing a way of how to actually remove a council member for misconduct. Then item 16, 18.02, financial interest in contracts. Again, kind of another hitting home of what we already talked about. No officer, appointed or elected official, or employee of the city shall have financial interest or direct interest in contract of the city. This is, the thought behind this was to hold city council to the same standard of city employees of not benefiting from financial contracts. Again, that is already information that is implied in our charter as current, but they wanted to, they being the Charter Review Commission, wanted to change the language and update it. Again, any employee willfully violates this said section shall therefore forfeit his office or position. Any appointed elected official or offices or not employed by the city willfully violates this section shall be immediately removed by a vote of not less than five members of city council. So again, you can kind of see how all those sections are kind of related and built into each other. Once you explain the first couple, it kind of ripples throughout the charter in certain Moving on, agenda item number 17, still in article 3, the council, section 3.11, when ordinances and resolutions take effect, and a new section, this is proposed, 3.13, publication for public hearings. Both of these sections are actually coming from my office, and basically, if approved, it is more apparent that resolutions go into effect immediately for the city of Hamilton and allows city clerk to post legal public hearing notices to the city website instead of a newspaper. What that really means is, we want to clarify section 311. Right now, it implies that resolutions go into effect immediately, anything that you pass at your meetings. It does not explicitly say that they go into effect immediately. That is the standard throughout the state of Ohio. It does set up all of the guidelines of the referendum period of our ordinances, emergency ordinances, and how those vote tallies need to work. However, it just references resolutions. It, it's clear that the charter has been amended a few times for, for language in that section, because it's kind of choppy. That section for 311 would actually just state resolutions go into effect immediately. That is the only real change to section 311. Section 3- Section 3.13 is new. It is not in the charter currently. What that basically does is allows the city clerk or whoever to post public hearings in an avenue that is not just the journal newspaper. Public hearings, like this hearing, was noticed in the newspaper at least 24 hours before the date and time of the hearing. So I had a notice in the newspaper yesterday saying we would have this hearing. I am charged, or any city employees charged, for that notice in the newspaper. On average, I try to keep them very short because I'm charged for lying, but it's about $100. Some sections are much, much longer and charge a higher number. We have already moved to put our zoning hearings on the city website. I am proposing that we do the same. Under home rule, we are allowed to do that if we amend our charter. That is what the section says, that we are allowed to post to the city website, make a new webpage saying, these are all our public hearings are, this is where you can find it. And I don't have to send it to the newspaper just because I don't think I'm getting much return other than the fact that it's something I legally have to do for the newspaper. Most people go to our city website for information now. But that's what that section's going to do. Again, that's for 311, talking about implementing resolutions go immediately upon passage. And that's the new section, 3.13. It's very short, to the point. Public hearing required by law to be published by the city, shall be published electronically on the city's website or in a newspaper of general circulation in the city, or may be supplemented with any other electronic media generally available to the public. We didn't remove the fact that we can't post it in the newspaper. If it is a council prerogative that there's a really big hearing that we want to have, put in the newspaper, we can still do that, still pay the fine to do that. This just gives us an option of being better, in my opinion, stewards of the city's taxpayer Agenda Item Number 18. Article V, Administrative Services, Section 5.03, Removal Officers and Employees. Okay, we're going to go to the reasoning on this one first. This section provides guidance on the layoff notices and how they are communicated along with the notices of layoffs or removals. The section discusses the appeal rights of officers and employees. This would be used by an employee of the City of Hamilton that was given a layoff notice or notice of termination of employment and that the employee wishes to make a case against the order to the Civil Service Commission. The section as currently written implies that all employees have this appeal right. This seems to be in conflict with the premise of employment as an unclassified employee. Unclassified employees are generally considered to be at-will employees and do not enjoy appeal rights related to their employment. While the vast majority of city employees are classified, there is a small minority that are not. Per Section 10.02 of the Charter, unclassified employees include the city manager, department directors, secretaries to the city manager, and the directors, and the city clerk. Unclassified employees are generally, generally do not have civil service protection. Section 5.03 as written implies that all employees have these protections. The reasoning kind of summed it up there at the end. We remove the ambiguity and would reserve the appeal rights to those sections that are described in Charter 10.03 of the Civil Service Rules. Furthermore, the amendment would make clear that layoff notices and procedures fall under the purview of the Civil Service Commission and Department by removing any reference to them from Section 5.03 of this charter. That's a really wordy explanation on that one. Basically, you are striking most of the language from it. And then continued, basically saying it falls under the purview of Civil Service Rules adopted under Article 10.03 of the Charter. Agenda Item Number 19. Article VII, Department of Finance, Financial Procedure, Section 7.01, Duties of the Director of Finance. Purpose: If approved, this will commit the additional duties of the city auditor to that of the Director of Finance. The City of Hamilton does not have the position of city auditor nor that of a village clerk. Reasoning: This is actually, again, coming from the city clerk's office, not the Department of Finance. In certain sections of the Ohio Revised Code, there are instances when the city auditor or village clerk must take specific action. Since the city has no intention of staffing either the position, of either position, Director of Finance has agreed to accept the responsibilities and duties of the city auditor should that need arise. The duties of the city auditor are relevant when it comes to having the authority to sign off on the appropriate forms for the state or other agencies. This issue arose when a citizens group wanted to petition the city and the Board of Elections to get an issue on the ballot in a previous election. Per state guidelines, only the village clerk or city auditor may sign off on the initial petition filing. After consulting with legal counsel, it was determined that based on the defined duties of each position in the ORC, the Director of Finance would be the city's version of the city auditor, since the Director of Finance has the authority to make financial decisions for the organization. The current Director of Finance was consulted about the proposed amendment and his charter duties, and the issue was brought before the Charter Review Commission. So, that was an issue that Citizens Group came to my office. They asked me to sign off on this document. I don't have the authority to. This just clarifies, again, in our home rule for our charter, that we don't need a city auditor or we're not a village. The city clerk is not the same thing. That is something for a much smaller community because I am not in charge of the entire purse of the City of Hamilton. That clarifies that issue. There is more examples in the Ohio Revised Code than the petition issue, but that's the issue that was relevant to us about two years ago. Article IX, Improvement Contracts. Purpose: If approved, change orders and contract alterations will no longer be sent through city council for approval. Instead, they will be approved administratively. Reasoning: The reasoning for this proposed change is that the council controls the city's annual budget and appropriations on a macro level. Individual contracts and change orders, if within budgeted and appropriated amounts, can be handled administratively without necessitating legislative action. This follows a city's philosophy that if a project has been budgeted for and approved by city council, then there is no need to have the contract go to city council for approval. Change orders would now be incorporated under that philosophy. So there's two sections on this. They're packaged together. 901 contracts, again, subject to appropriation of funds by council and authorized by the city manager. That would take that authority from council, the change orders, we see them as caucus reports. Council kind of approves them or asks questions. It is similar in nature on that. And also alteration in contracts. That is basically what the language is striking and just saying that the city manager or administration has the authority to make those decisions on our own because council already approves the budget. Article X, Department of Civil Service, Section 10.01 through 10.07, and Section 10.10, 10.11, and 10.20, by renaming the Department of Civil Service and Personnel to the Department of Human Resources. It's a pretty straightforward one. If approved, the Department of Civil Service and Personnel will be renamed Department of Human Resources. Reasoning: Changing the department name from Civil Service and Personnel to Human Resources indicates that the department moves in a more fluid and knowledgeable fashion to support its employees. It illuminates the fact that the department is interested in the full employment experience from recruitment to retirement. Currently, the current title, Civil Service and Personnel, alludes that there is only functionality and that it does not comprise of additional components that aid the organization and its employees in continuing education, growing the business, and making future investments in new hires. Revising the adequate name and scope of Civil Service and Personnel to Human Resources fills the promise that the City of Hamilton will continue to modernize and be in the forefront of change. I am not going to redline all of that. It is just a name change. Where it says Director of Civil Service, it would be Director of Human Resources. If it's referenced as Civil Service, it's Human Resources. That is a charter department meeting. That is not something we can change by legislation. Even something as simple as a name change has to be run by the voters because anything we change in the charter, you need to have an election for it. So, that's all 21 does. Still in Article X, Department of Civil Service, Agenda Item Number 22, Sections 10.01, Section D, Civil Service Commission, and 10.02, classifications. Purpose: If approved, this will give the city manager the authority to appoint and remove the Director of Civil Service and Personnel. This will remove the authority of the Civil Service Commission to appoint and remove the Director of Civil Service and Personnel as it is currently set up. Reasoning: The reasoning for this proposed change is that in the past, there has been administrative difficulty having a director of an entire department report to and be hired by an independent commission of volunteers. The Civil Service Commission will then act as a governing body of the Civil Service Rules rather than also governing the Civil Service Department. The Director of Civil Service and Personnel will be given a non-competitive examination by the city manager when we consider for this position. So, it kind of strikes the language here, again, where it just says the Civil Service Commission has that authority. The proposal would give the city manager that authority. What this basically does is bring the Civil Service Director's purview under the city manager and sets up the Civil Service Commission to act more as an appeal body versus then an appeal body and one that governs the Director of Civil Service, Civil Service Commission. They do the hiring and the firing of any civil service director that we have. And again, that's just keeping up current with what actually is done in the other section. Still in Article X, Department of Civil Service, Section 10.03H, Civil Service Rules. Purpose: If approved, this will increase the number of hours of temporary employment from 1,040 hours to 1,560 hours. This allows for approximately nine months of interrupted seasonal employment. Reasoning behind this one: This would be particularly beneficial to the Department of Resident Services. Seasonal employment in the city used to be primarily tied to summer months of recreation. With the creation of the Hamilton Parks and Servency, there is less of a need for temporary summer help. Temporary employment is now primarily tied to the quality of life type issues involving nuisance code enforcement and for property maintenance issues that are addressed regularly from the early spring to late fall. Tracking hours and requesting extensions ties up resources that could be better utilized And so, strike 1040, add 1560. I think the reasoning is pretty straightforward on that one about why it was proposed. Agenda Item Number 24. Article 11, Economic Development. This is the second new section that is being proposed in the charter, again, with that section 3.13. This is the new, actual, whole article. And this would, kind of reasoning and purpose kind of go hand in hand on this one. The reasoning for this proposed amendment is that, is believed that the economic development has seen an increase of importance within the City of Hamilton as our current economic development department has played a crucial role in assisting with the revitalization of the city. Council be established and repeal city departments by legislation at will, except for those that are specifically established by city charter. Since economic development has begun playing this crucial role, the mayor wishes to establish a Department of Economic Development as a charter department. This will ensure that a future council will not be able to abolish or modify the mission of the economic development department without the consent of the electors of the City of Hamilton. Subsequent articles of the city charter, we renumbered, starting with Public Health as a new Article 12 if this were to pass. Not getting rid of the public health, everything if this were to go into effect goes up one number. But this, that's the section's pretty, pretty small on, really, this is a paper change. Nothing would be changed in our current economic development department. Instead of the fact that it is a legislative ordinance department, it would now be chartered. It would have to be votes of the people if we were to get rid of that department instead of just a vote of council. That's really what it does. Okay, Section 12.03, The Fire Force. Agenda Item Number 25. This section, I'm going to handle a little bit differently just because it was probably the most contentious of the topics as briefed on by Chair Pickett. I'm going to turn this over here in a second to Chief Mark Mercer to explain the proposal as it came from his department and was presented to the Charter Review Commission. It was presented at several different meetings and went back and forth between several revisions before it got to the current state. I know we're going to have some public comments of this on the book before this hearing began already. I'm going to run through administratively with Chief Mercer that issue, and then we will take all the other public comments after the conclusion of this entire presentation. So with that, if I could ask Chief Mercer?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mark Mercer, I'm the Fire Chief for the city. So, the proposal that we looked at has to do with Section 12.03 of the charter, and that is the Fire Force. I did a small PowerPoint presentation. Hopefully, I'm going to be able to click through, and Nick's got me set up. Very good. So, this particular portion of the current charter was voted on, put in place by the citizens, effective January 1 of 1954. There are several letters that are included to, to the Charter Review Commission and one specifically to council. It talks a little bit about the background and what the scheduling looks like. This is not a, this is not a portion of the charter that sets levels of service or determines level of safety that's provided to the city. This is a scheduling clause for the Fire Force. City council determines how many personnel, how many fire stations, how many medic units, how many people are working every day simply by passing the budget and having the manager direct me how to staff the fire department. So this has nothing to do with the level of safety service provided to the citizens. This has to do simply with a scheduling clause for the workforce. So, provisions of that section prescribed a work schedule in two separate scheduling options. One was a two-platoon schedule, working with a variety of days off. The second option for that was a three-platoon system, each of which provided for a 56-hour work week. The first one provided some extra days off to reduce the work week. The second one simply said, work one day, take two days off. Let me go one more here. So in 1984, we, the State of Ohio passed the Public Employees' Collective Bargaining Act. So that makes mandatory, mandatory terms of employment, things that we have to bargain for, one of those being work hours, and that is that work schedule. That prescribed work schedule in our charter is something that we now have to bargain. It's not something that can be appropriately set by the vote of the citizens. It is something that we negotiate. As we negotiate, we determine how many hours per week are you going to work. Currently, the line firefighters work a 48-hour work week. So the 56 hours, that was the intention of the electors in the 1954 charter amendment, is not something that we currently follow. We've negotiated that as required by state law. Revising that language that is in the charter, the 1954 language removes obsolete language related to the work week in terms of employment that are more appropriate for the collective bargaining agreement rather than for the city charter. So what are the effects of the current language? We have negotiated work hours as required by ORC 4117. We do that now. We've done it for as long as I've been on the fire department. Regardless of the 56-hour work week described in the charter, in 1989, when I came here, we were working 53 hours. We have not followed this in my 31 years. The current schedule agreed upon by both parties is different than either schedule. It's not that either one of those two-platoon or that three-platoon system is described. So regardless of the intent of the citizens in 1954, those work hours and other terms of employment are no longer appropriate for the city charter. They are more appropriate for the collective bargaining agreement with the labor organization. So that is, those are, those are my comments. I know that this is a complex issue. I submitted two separate proposals to the Charter Review Commission, the second one based on comments that I heard on the first meeting and then reaching out to a couple of other concerned citizens, previous fire chief, to understand what his concerns were, making sure that we were not putting in jeopardy that the funding that the citizens approved nor the intent of providing service to the citizens. Questions?
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Mercer. And we'll have public comments at the conclusion of this presentation. Agenda Item Number 26. We're almost there. Article 18, Miscellaneous Provisions, Section 18.10, Equal Employment Opportunity prohibiting discrimination and gender. Purpose: If approved, this will provide equal opportunity in city employment for all persons and prevent discrimination in city employment because of race, color, religion, sex, nationality, origin, handicap, ancestry, or age. The reasoning of this, the Hamilton Pride Organization asks that the city Charter Review Commission update this language to include sexual orientation and gender identity. The full request letter to the Charter Review Commission from the Hamilton Pride Organization is attached in your council packet. But that was a pro- But that was a proposal by, again, the Hamilton Pride as a citizens group. This one did not come from the administration or the city charter or any other elected official. This was a private citizens group, and they just want to add sexual orientation, gender identity, and include all genders in Section 1810, which is at the, near the end of our current charter. Now, Vice Chair Stark asked that I read some comments on this section. Mayor Mohler and Council, thank you for the privilege to serve as Vice Chair for the 2020 Charter Review Commission. Per Section 1810, as important as this issue is, we can leave any more arguments at the presence. It is of note that one week after the Charter Review Commission 2020 voted unanimously to recommend these changes, the U.S. Supreme Court ruled to ban discrimination in the workforce on basis of sexual orientation and gender identity on a national level. Even with this foresight, the commission feels it is important that our city make some gestures to affirm these now requisite changes on a local level. An acknowledgement is also in order to the community leaders who spoke in support of this motion, and especially the board of the recently formed Hamilton Pride Committee. And lastly, Article 18, miscellaneous provisions, Section 1811, Charter Review Commission, the commission itself. Purpose and reasoning: This one is coming from the office of city clerk. If approved, the proposed revisions to this section would make the duties of the Charter Review Commission and the council and the city clerk more well-defined. The city clerk proposed these changes as he felt that more descriptions or guidance is needed for future commissions and clerks because the current wording leaves too much ambiguity. It was felt that all the roles must be more clearly defined so the process can be more effective. So this is pretty much the current section of what's in our charter, 1811 Charter Review Commission. This paragraph in black is the only paragraph we have that actually talks about how we amend the charter at all. It mainly just sets up how we're going to have a commission and when they'll meet and when we'll have a special commission. It doesn't actually say what the city clerk should do or council should do in any of this. As someone going through this first commission, that was a little frustrating and having to go look back at all of the history about everything, about how this actually works and plays out. So the section as proposed would actually be broken into three parts, an A, a B, and a C. Section A is pretty much the same, only just kind of giving it a header, Charter Review Commission, as one way for the charter to be recommended on a change. Section B, charter amendment by council. Council may submit a proposed charter amendment to the electors without a regular or special charter review commission if said amendment is to address an issue in the charter that has been determined to be immediately hindering the city or city-related operations. This amendment must not change the intent of the charter section at issue, only adjust it. Proposed amendment to the charter shall be read at two separate council meetings, one of which shall have a public hearing. Proposed charter amendment would be required a supermajority of six council members voting in favor of the measure for passage. This came about as an issue in 2018 when it was determined by the Butler County Board of Elections that we had a, the form to actually run for city council as part of our charter. The form, however, was flawed. It was missing where people were signing and people were going to file, run for election. They would fill out what they thought was the appropriate paperwork, and they write manner, and the Board of Elections would throw out all of their signatures, saying you did it wrong because it was missing certain signage sections. Board of Elections asked us near the 2018 election to make that change. There was not any time for each special charter review commission. This was more of a administrative matter, and it was deemed as such so we would not hinder future council elections. The Charter Review Commission is a recommended body. They cannot send things directly to the voters as we are now here this evening, and you can yea or nay what they say. That basically, Section B, kind of acknowledges that, that council has the authority just to enact something without a commission. The commission did want the language on this as a supermajority, and that it would be an issue that they felt would be more of clerical in nature or something immediately hindering, as they didn't want it to be a future council policy of never having a charter review commission ever again, and then council just enacting, sending different things to the voters. But even if that were the case, things still have to be approved on by the electors of the city. So there still is a failsafe built in. Section C is really just more guidance about the whole process. If council desires to submit amendments recommended by a regular charter review commission, special charter review commission, under Paragraph A of this yada, 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 or Paragraph B, council shall pass an ordinance approving the proposed charter amendments. The city clerk shall file these amendments with the Butler County Board of Elections for the next available election, so the proposed amendments may be voted on by the electors of the City of Hamilton. City clerk shall advertise that proposals are available to the public for viewing and will provide the public with avenues to suspect set approvals. That's what we're doing right now. They're all on our, they're all on our website. There's a section in the Ohio Revised Code about any changes that council does enact will be posted in the local newspaper at least twice. That is not something that will even be changed by the public hearing of our home rule. And that kind of just gives a little bit more direction of what the city clerk is supposed to do, what the expectations of council and the Charter Review Commission are. Again, this is just a recommended review body, and I think clarity would be helpful in that manner. Before I conclude, I'm going to remind council of what we're asking them for this evening. There is not a vote on any of these issues tonight. We're asking that for August the 12th. I would highly recommend that council does not push the vote back after that, just to keep with the timelines of the Butler County Board of Elections and getting an approval on that process. We talked at length just about the amended charter verbiage itself. I am less concerned, and I believe council should be as well, about the actual council ballot language. The Butler County Board of Elections has final say in that, and in the ordinances, you can see the section that says question about what we think that language should be. Board of Elections can change that around as they see fit. What we are asking council for is if they want to amend any of these ordinances, if you want me to separate the question at all, if you want to send a competing clause, if you, I don't think there's a lot of issues on that where we would have that this evening, but you could always send something as a, if not A, then B. That is something that council has the authority to do as well. We would just ask for that feedback, myself and the Department of Law, just because charter amendments are difficult to write with the Ohio Revised Code, and if you want to make that change on the fly at the next council meeting, that would be an administrative difficulty. So balls kind of in your court about what you want to do. At August 12th, you can approve all of these wonderful things, or you can all say this is not something that we are interested in. You can approve some or none. It will require that council has a two-thirds majority vote. Five members of council will have to enact to pass anything at the next meeting. Just going to sit down and state that. Other than that, I think that's all I got. I can answer questions and from the commission about their meetings, but we will then start calling in members of the public.
I've got a comment and a question if I could.
Yes, sir.
First of all, thank you for your hard work you put into this. I can just tell that you, you had, you played a big role into this, so thank you very much for that. When, I would date you with feedback from us. Make it more specific as to what date would make it easier on you, the law department, and everybody who's put this together.
Probably ideally if you had general comments tonight while you're together, as you can discuss amongst yourselves, that would be great for this hearing. Clearly, if council comes back and emails us something later about a particular, I mean, we're talking about the nouns, the verbs, if you don't like a particular word, anything that would be amended that was in there, you know, we need to talk about. Can always certainly email me that feedback, but if there are large changes, like we really want to strike this whole section, that would be something more sooner than later. If it's just simple words and things like that, it's a lot easier.
So you're looking at maybe week, 10 days? I mean, how much time?
Week, week's good. Week's good.
I would think no more than that.
Yeah.
About the end of the month. To say that.
Our next meeting is the 12th.
Yeah, so you have.
We've got to have the answer on that.
So you have three weeks before your next meeting. We would want to post this online just to make sure that it's transparent to the public if you did make any changes.
Sure.
We would need to acknowledge that at the next council meeting, that this has been changed or that has not been changed.
About a week then. Any other questions or comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and actually all of council. I wish I would have thought of this sooner, but it just came to me sitting here. The last four new members that have been elected to council have not gone through any kind of training, any kind of orientation, any, anything when it comes to council. I'm wondering if it would be a benefit to somehow put that in charter, like maybe under the 3.3 or someplace put in there so it is in writing? Because, because I know when I was elected, Ina Allen was the city clerk then, and, and she had, and I still have the packet that I'm happy to give you, Nick, if you'd like, if we're going to create this. But it really was very helpful to understand exactly what was going to happen when you sat down for that first meeting. So I'm just wondering, especially the new members, if that would be of any benefit to be sure that it doesn't fall to the wayside again with new members.
Absolutely. I think, you know, I think that's a definite help, because I still have questions. You know, it's all, you know, I, I think even the whole time you're on here, you're going to have questions, but I think there's a lot of things I had to dig in and call people and ask questions, and it would have been, we had some initial meetings with Joshua and some other people, but I think maybe a half-day or three-hour training would be good to go over some of the proper etiquette here, some of the sunshine laws and stuff like that. I would email etiquette and all that stuff.
And I think it's, I'm sorry. I think it's for its timing even to do it sometime in November, because you guys, new members start coming into executive session right away. I mean, they hit the ground ready. So I think the sooner that new members get acclimated to being on council, the better it's going to be for all of us. I mean, even though we've been on council, we've never been on council as these seven people. So it's, it's a good opportunity for us to get to know each other, too.
So you're thinking about maybe establishing a certain date by charter when they're asking you maybe?
An orientation or something for?
I think it needs to be specifically by a certain date, so if it happens. Add some structure to it possibly. If you want to work on something like that to submit to all of us.
I mean, I just would give you what Ina gave me. We could update it. It really is, it was a nice.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
The only thing I would caution on that, so I met with new council members, and we created a pretty, I thought, a pretty robust package where I brought in the law director, I brought in the city clerk. I try, I mean, we tried to cover as many topics as possible. I did that both with Councilmember Vaughn and Vice Mayor Holman. I also at that meeting indicated that the Ohio Municipal League has what you just talked about. But the only thing I want to caution, if you say November, they offer that every January, I think it's every January for new members, and they have a, and they have a, obviously more robust than I can do, and they would cover topics that I did not. I covered mostly, you know, how something gets on a council agenda, how you direct a question to the law director, how you enter, you know, that Nick and I are your two employees as an example. I would just caution that if you say by November, we should maybe, may want to check with the Ohio Municipal League and see when they do the sunshine law training and things of that nature.
And, and I agree. The only reason I said maybe November is because, I mean, simple things, and I know everyone has said, how do you do that voting? Do you, does somebody know ahead of time? I mean, just very simple bread and butter kind of stuff that, that really is just about Hamilton is all I meant, not so much sunshine laws and all that. I, I know that it gets discussed there, and that is a great program that they have that. I just meant something that is more organized pertaining to Hamilton City Council that would make it a little more, like to explain what goes on executive session, to explain how executive session, everything is kept confidential back there, just the things that pertain to us is what I was talking about more.
And Joshua, you did a great job with all that. I mean, it's a lot, you know, take it a lot at one time, because everything is new on us, but it's the simple things, I think, is what I'm taking. You're saying just a simple email procedures and stuff, stuff you really didn't go over on that because that, that was just minor, same, just, it's basically minor protocol things, I think, is what you're saying. You know, basically, some procedures that I have to still kind of ask around every once in a while. Nothing real in depth like what you did when I first got elected, but, I mean, I appreciate that. My head was all blown up and stopped when I left, but, you know, it was great. But it's, you know, a lot to take in. But I know there's anybody, any department here you call, they're, you know, what's really nice about this is you can call anybody and they will answer a question, too. And I think a refresher would be good for anybody on council, you know? Maybe, you know, simple refresher course. I, I like that part of it.
Second, I think, uh, law director wants you to work.
Mr. Mayor, Letitia Block, Director of Law, if you don't mind, what I would, what I've done with all of these proposals is, you know, if Commissioner Wile had the proposal, I would work with him to try to craft language that you see here today. So what I can do between now and our next city council meeting is get with Councilmember Fear and talk about what, where it makes sense to add to Article 3 in our charter language like that, and then present that. But how we propose our ordinances thus far, what I would think it would be a new ordinance, a new emergency ordinance with a separate question that would have to be presented at our next meeting, unless we want to group it with some of the ordinances we currently have read today.
Honestly, my intention was to add a sentence or two, to not really make it a big drawn-out ordinance of its own.
Okay.
Just to make it a sentence or two in there, just so it didn't fall through cracks.
Okay.
That was my intention. I mean, we can even mention if, that there is, Ohio Municipal League, we encourage people to go to if we want, but I didn't mean for it to be something long and drawn out, just more getting it done.
All right, that's fine. Well, then, we, what we'll do is add it to some of the other ordinances on city council then.
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions on that?
I, I actually have one more question. I don't know who to direct it to. When this goes on the ballot, are each of these issues voted on separately?
That is something that city council needs to tell me. As proposed right now, they are written that those are 14 separate questions. When you go to the ballot box, you'll see Hamilton City Issue, 1, 2, 3, da-da-da-da. That would be if council were to pass all of those. There is a clause, it's in one of the sections near the end of the ordinance, that says it shall not be combined with any other issue. If city council wants to combine all of the issues into a single ballot, that's fine. Oxford did that a couple of years ago. They had 19 amendments, and they said these are mostly clerical. We don't feel like there's a big heartache over it. One issue, yes or no? If council wants them all sep, as separate 14 things, that is fine as well. That is kind of the feedback that I need to hear from council about what their desire is. It doesn't have to be 14. It can be two or three. It can be, we've, we've done it a number of ways, past, in the past charter. The last several charter review commissions, it looks like they've sent things pretty much how presented it was tonight, that there are many questions versus only one or two. Sometimes they've been grouped together a little bit, but primarily, it is, Section 5.03 is its own thing. Article 9 is its own thing. So that's just historically what we've done, but that doesn't mean that we have to do it that way.
I think you've given us a good starting clustering ones that make sense now. Maybe somebody thinks one's going to be broken out from the other within the cluster that you've already given to us. Fine, if you'll get that input. I would personally, I don't see them all ordered to one. I think this is just such a vast.
Right.
Spectrum of charter issues.
Yeah, it is.
Hate to see one good one go because of one that was, you know, not as. So I, I think you've clustered them nicely, but let's just maybe pull one or two out of the cluster that is in. Like I said, this took a lot of work. There's no doubt that charter commission worked hard, and you worked very hard.
So just one comment to Councilmember Sphers' proposal. One thing that you may consider is that there is a, it is chartered that there's, the city council will have an organizational meeting.
Right.
After the election is set up by January and things like that. If you're only wishing to amend a sentence or two, I'm sure you'll have a discussion with the law director, but it, it doesn't actually say what you need to do with your organizational meeting, other than the fact that you need to have one and just, so you're sworn in and everything. You could always just maybe amend that and expand what that actually means, but that might be a, a way.
I mean, that's really up to everybody on council. I wish just to recommend, like I said, I wish I would have thought about this sooner, but just came to me sitting here. So I'm up to any recommendation. I just think that it's something that, I know it was beneficial to me, even though I did both of them, as a new member, just under, being able to one-on-one ask what may seem dumb questions when you're sitting up here, that you don't feel so stupid asking when it's one-on-one with someone.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to go on record, Nick. Thank you for all of your work into the Charter Review Commission, for all of their work. What you put into tonight's presentation, what the last couple of months have been is as far as presentation of ideas, thoughts, the input from our citizens, that Mr. Pickerell talked to us about this evening. It is important to this challenge every five years to, to work with the existing charter and the recommendations of the commission. We don't take those lightly, and... We don't take those lightly, and the work of council now ahead of us for this next week and in the three weeks when we would put out all of these to a vote, I think is, is worth noting. Thanks again, Nick.
Any other comments on Burke's presentation before I guess we bring in anybody who signed the public speaking book?
Thank you, Nick.
I just have one comment. Chair Pickrell was slightly incorrect in his initial statement that there was only one item of contention. At the last Charter Review Commission meeting, there was a failed motion from two to eight of renaming the city to the city of Hamilton with an exclamation point. I'm not saying who proposed that, but if you reconsidered that, that would be really cool.
You're going to like working for the next city you worked for.
I like the way he reads letters. He's awesome.
Mr. Mayor, there is one name on the list currently.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Tony Harris.
Aye.
Which is the comment on Section 12.03.
Mr. Mayor, city council, Tony Harris, Hamilton Professional Firefighters, president, Local 20. Signed the book with my home address, but we actually have a new home for Local 20 in town, so 204 North Third's our new home address for the locals. So that's a good day for us. Just wanted to address you on the 12.03. This was something that came up a couple of times through Charter Review. I was able to, to address the commission multiple times, share some points that I had, trying to look back at the history of it. From what, like Chief said, it was, it looks like it was on the ballot in 1953, passed, third platoon added in 1954, and with that third platoon language, the 24-48 shift schedule. And I'll agree with Chief on a few things. There was, you know, he talked about, and as we get there, it'll be a little easier to see. The second paragraph, this is about a three-paragraph article total. The second paragraph i- is very outdated, and from how I can read it without being able to read a charter, you know, from 1953, it references the two platoon, which went away, you know, January 1 of 54. So most of that language in the second, I assume all that language in the second paragraph precedes that levy passing. I would, I can only assume, I don't have a charter in front of me from then. The third paragraph was the area that I had the most concern. During the discussions like Chief mentioned, initially it was struck the fire force may divide it into three platoon system. That was added back after some of the discussion, but then it was still struck that the members worked 24 consecutive hours, followed by the 48 consecutive hours off, citing that doesn't necessarily meet the current work week. We've negotiated over the work week since, I assume, the 80s, when collective bargaining came into play. The three platoon system is under our shift schedule in our CBA, and actually, you know, kind of a tip of the hat to the charter that it says, basically, references the charter as to why we have a 24-48 shift schedule. Under that article, we also have language that talks about there are people who do work aside from that 24-48 being our 40-hour personnel. So without knowing completely as to why and what the plans are with this change, the concern I have is, you know, with this charter, with the charter passage, the levy passage in 1954, it essentially locked in the 24 hours a day, we would offer, to me, the same level of service. If we go away from that 24-48 language, what does that mean? Does that mean we don't offer a certain level of service at certain parts of the day? During the charter review, there was some discussion of peak time staffing, the challenges with that, and honestly, I wish we could plan it. We can't plan for emergencies. You know, when I go eat dinner, when I go eat lunch, when I go to take a shower after a busy run, you don't know when another run's going to come in. You might not make it back for many hours. There's no way to plan for the emergencies. So to try to plan out peak time staffing, we're, we're not like a restaurant where you have lunch rush and dinner rush. We, you know, we're pretty consistently busy around the clock. It does vary some in the overnight hours because there's less people out on the streets and things like that, but, you know, we, we make a lot of runs, we're fairly busy every day. So those are the main concerns we have. A lot of my members have come to me about this, when they heard about this, tried to reassure them that, again, we'll have to go to negotiations over this, no matter what happens here. When we negotiate this, it's in our contract, it's something that's discussed and can be discussed. So whether, you know, whether it goes on to the voters, whether it doesn't, whether it's passed or it's not, we're going to have to discuss it. And my concern is just removing that language. Again, you're touching a paragraph that has nothing to do, in my opinion, with the second paragraph. It's, it's two separate entities because the, the one was post-levy, and it was ensuring then in 1954, the, the citizens, I think, voted to ensure that they had a certain, you know, staffing 24, 24 hours a day. And adding the three platoon back without the 24-48, what is the platoon? We don't, we don't know. You know, it could be an eight-hour platoon, it could be 12-hour platoon, I, you know, the platoon that we have is a 24-hour platoon, and according to even Chief and some of his emails that he's given to, to the department about this, reference that that is an efficient model. And for us, we have found that that provides some efficiencies, things like we're able to work a 48-hour work week versus a 40-hour work week of a typical employee. So by working those 24-hour shifts, we're able to work more, then hopefully provide more coverage to the city with less firefighters. And that's something we've seen, especially in this years of, of run volume increases. It's something that's good, I think, for the membership. I know many of my members have told me that's, that's the, that's the shift standard for most, most firefighters. They work 24 on, off 48. We've had major retention issues over the last couple of years, losing 10 firefighters in the last three years to other departments. To have a different shift model that is less desirable to the employee is going to create more retention issues. So it's, in my mind, it's a safety issue, it's a retention issue, and really, it's, it's something we would discuss in negotiations anyway. So I, I don't understand the reasoning for wanting to move that from the third paragraph. Like I said, the second paragraph, I'll agree, that's, that's old outdated language that, to me, precedes the levy. But the third paragraph, you know, I don't understand the reasoning for wanting to remove that. So I think that's all the thoughts I have with that. I try to kind of, it's, it's a very complex issue. I know it's kind of a nuanced issue. I mean, our shift schedule's kind of tough to understand at times, but the things I tried to look at is like, what's the best, better, safest, the most efficient way? And our system isn't broken. We're, we're providing, you know, a high level of service 14,400 times a year. And if we change that, to me, it's going to water down the services and make an already challenging job more challenging, and, you know, and then force maybe members to sacrifice something to, to protect that shift schedule later. That's, that's, you know, those are, those are challenges. A lot of our guys are already sacrificing a lot to be here because they make a lot of runs and are very busy. To ask them to sacrifice more would be, you know, I think would be a tipping point for us where we would, you know, kind of exacerbate a problem that we already have with retention. So open to any questions you have.
Mr. Mayor, I've got one.
Tony, I just got some questions I want to ask. First of all, because I don't know this process, do you have exit interviews when somebody leaves the department?
Yeah, I believe so. I'm not a part of those.
Okay.
But I'm sure we do.
Okay. So I, I mean, I'm kind of curious, on an exit interview, did they leave for money? Did they leave for, did they leave for a better shift, or is there anything that anybody's filled out? And, I mean, it would be nice to know whether taking this language out is, you know, if you took it out, if it's really relevant to your shift, if they left for a different reason. I would like to see, I don't know if Chief Burser has it or something, do we have maybe your last 10 people that left, is there, is there an exit interview or the reason why they left?
So, yes, I, uh...
Not just, I'm curious because, you know, when I had an employee exit my company, I always did an exit interview, and I want to see, what am I doing wrong? Or, you know, what, you know, in this case, what are, maybe the department is doing wrong, or what's the city doing wrong? And a good exit interview and maybe some stats on that would help a lot in determining whether they should stay or go.
Sure. So with each of the members that resigned, I don't catch all of them, some of them declined the opportunity. I speak with most of them. For the last one who left, he was a supervisor on the medic unit. So he was a promoted guy, he was making lieutenant's wages. He had a handful of reasons for leaving, and primarily, that was the work overnight, the workload. He, he went to a department where he was making a little bit more money, but the hourly wage was about the same. He went from working that 48-hour work week to a 56-hour work week. He went to Loveland Indian, or to Indian Hill, where they do work a longer work week. Fewer runs, and his issue was, you know, if we could have more staffing where he could sleep more while he's on duty, then that, that, the overnight staffing was a big issue for him. But the, the money was a little bit better, averaged out about the same, but it was the workload. So as council has done since January of this year, looking at the peak staffing and, and adding that peak staffing, so since January, we've staffed a fourth medic unit, 12-hour shifts, primarily with overtime, and we've spent, I, I do a report monthly, it's not fresh in my mind, but at this point, we're at about $160,000 in overtime costs to staff that medic unit 12 hours a day. And those are the overtime costs. Some of that we actually fill with straight-time staffing, depending on, you know, who's available on, on shift at that time. We staff 24 during the day from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, and then 22 minimum from 8:00 PM to the, to the following morning. That peak staffing is predictable. We know when we're busy. Looking at three years of data, 2017, 18, and 19, our peak time is between 10:00 AM and 10:00 PM. So we bring the staffing on at 8 o'clock. If they get held over a little bit past that 8:00 PM time, we still have the staffing, staffing on there, regardless of, let's see. So regardless of, of what our, what our cost is, we're staffing that to meet that. When we decide how many people we're going to staff, how many fire apparatus, how many medic units, we do that based on recommendations. A handful of years ago, we did a study with Berkshire. Berkshire was a group that came in, valued with the fire department, and the questions were, we're in economic trouble here. We, we have problems. We don't have a bright future, and we asked for, what is the, what is the efficient way to run a fire department? And then we had a handful of, of scenarios that we went through. And the, when it got down to, you know, how do we provide fire service, it, there was never the discussion of less fire protection overnight. It was a minimum level of fire protection 24 hours a day. So the discussion on, well, do we not provide this service at night? Well, right now, and going forward, you know, the opportunity to provide staffing, to provide safety response rests with council, not with what's in the contract, or not, not with what's in the charter. If, you know, if I turn around to the safety director and say, "Look, we are, we are getting slammed, we are, you know, so many mutual aid calls at this time of day," then we would increase staffing at that time of day to cover that, to make sure that we're providing service to the citizens. It's not driven by what's in the charter as far as the schedule.
Anything else, anything else? Okay. Thank you. All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Tony.
Anyone else sign the book? City clerk?
No one else signed the book to speak.
You want to castle, wish to make any comments, or wish to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Nab?
I move the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Motion to make Councilmember Nab, secondly, Councilmember Brown, close this public hearing. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. It is 8:05. I'll set the motion at the regular meeting, be reconvened.
I move.
Second.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Pullman, seconded by Councilmember Ryan. Roll call, vote to reconvene to a regular meeting.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Muller?
Yes.
Motion adopted, 7-0.
Thank you. Okay. We now go to a motion that we need for council actions pertaining to legislative items. Reconvene, it's, it's 8:05. I need a motion regarding, uh, council actions pertaining to legislative items.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Nab?
I move that a note be made upon the minutes that each member of council has furnished a printed copy of each item of legislation prior to its being considered at this meeting.
Second.
Mr. Councilmember Nab, secondly, Councilmember Fear. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. We go to pending legislation. Item number six, second review of ordinance involving a side lot.
An ordinance approving the conveyance of certain real property acquired through the land bank to an adjoining property owner as a side lot, 420 Short Street.
Mayor?
Councilmember Fear?
I move the ordinance to be adopted.
Second. Mr. Councilmember Fear, secondly, Councilmember Ryan. Any discussion or comments? I just want to quickly thank Lauren Nelson, our city business development specialist, for her role in these side lot projects because they are working out well. Any other comments at this time? Hearing none, roll call, vote.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Muller?
Yes.
Ordinance adopted, 7-0.
We go to gen item number seven, second review of ordinance involving side lot, 805 Bell Avenue.
An ordinance approving the conveyance of certain real property acquired through the land bank to an adjoining property owner as a side lot, 805 Bell Avenue.
Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Ryan? I move that the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Mr. Councilmember Ryan, secondly, Councilmember Brown. Any discussion on this one? Hearing none, roll call, vote.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Muller?
Yes.
Ordinance stopped at 7-0.
As I reflect, the, the properties are, are on the screen as some of the locations I lot. Okay, gen item number eight, second review of an ordinance involving sidewalk cafe regulations.
An ordinance amending Part 9, Title 1, street and sidewalk areas, the codified ordinances of the city of Hamilton, adding a new Chapter 9, 17 sidewalk cafe regulations.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Vaughn?
I move the ordinance to be adopted.
Second.
Mr. Councilmember Vaughn, secondly, Councilmember Nab, discussion, comments? This does create permits and license for appearance of safety reasons for the sidewalk cafes. Any other discussion or comments? Hearing none, roll call, vote.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Muller?
Yes.
Ordinance stopped at 7-0.
Now, new legislation, gen item number nine, prescribing of an ordinance, side lot, 115 Franklin Street.
An ordinance approving the conveyance of certain real property acquired through the land bank to an adjoining property owner as a side lot, 115 Franklin Street. We go to gen item number 24, frustrating emergency ordinance also involving proposed amendment to the city charter.
An emergency ordinance provide for the submission to the electors of the City of Hamilton, Ohio at the general election to be held Tuesday, November 3, 2020. Proposed amendment to the city charter, the provisions of Article 10, Department of Civil Service, Sections 10.03H, civil service rules, as set forth full in this ordinance.
We go to gen item number 24, frustrating emergency ordinance also involving proposed amendment to the city charter.
An emergency ordinance provide for the submission to the electors of the City of Hamilton, Ohio at the general election to be held Tuesday, November 3, 2020. Proposed amendment to the city charter, the provisions of Article 10, Department of Civil Service, Sections 10.03H, civil service rules, as set forth full in this ordinance.
We go to gen item number 24, frustrating emergency ordinance also involving proposed amendment to the city charter.
An emergency ordinance provide for the submission to the electors of the City of Hamilton, Ohio at the general election to be held Tuesday, November 3, 2020. Proposed amendment to the city charter, the provisions of Article 10, Department of Civil Service, Sections 10.03H, civil service rules, as set forth full in this ordinance.
We go to gen item number 25, frustrating emergency ordinance also involving proposed amendment to the city charter.
An emergency ordinance to provide for the submission to the electors of the City of Hamilton, Ohio at the general election to be held Tuesday, November 3, 2020. Proposed amendment to the city charter, the provisions of Article 10, Department of Civil Service, Sections 10.03H, civil service rules, as set forth full in this ordinance.
We go to gen item number 24, frustrating emergency ordinance also involving proposed amendment to the city charter.
An emergency ordinance provide for the submission to the electors of the City of Hamilton, Ohio at the general election to be held Tuesday, November 3, 2020. Proposed amendment to the city charter, the provisions of Article 3, the Council, Section 3.07, rules of council, Section 3.08, quorum voting members, Article 5, Section 5.04, council not to interfere in appointments or removals, and Article 18, miscellaneous provisions, Section 18.02, financial interest in contracts, et cetera, as set forth full in this ordinance.
We go to gen item number 17, frustrating emergency ordinance also involving proposed amendment to the city charter.
An emergency ordinance provide for the submission to the electors of the City of Hamilton, Ohio at the general election to be held Tuesday, November 3, 2020. Proposed amendment to the city charter, the provisions of Article 3, the Council, Section 3.07, rules of council, Section 3.08, quorum voting members, Article 5, Section 5.04, council not to interfere in appointments or removals, and Article 18, miscellaneous provisions, Section 18.02, financial interest in contracts, et cetera, as set forth full in this ordinance.
We go to gen item number 17, frustrating emergency ordinance also involving proposed amendment to the city charter.
An emergency ordinance provide for the submission to the electors of the City of Hamilton, Ohio at the general election to be held Tuesday, November 3, 2020. Proposed amendment to the city charter, the provisions of Article 3, the Council, Section 3.11, when ordinances and resolutions take effect, and a new Section 3.13, publication for public hearings, as set forth full in this ordinance.
Thank you. We go to gen item number 18, frustrating emergency ordinance also involving proposed amendment to the city charter.
An emergency ordinance provide for the submission to the electors of the City of Hamilton, Ohio at the general election to be held Tuesday, November 3, 2020. Proposed amendment to the city charter, the provisions of Article 3, the Council, Section 3.11, when ordinances and resolutions take effect, and a new Section 3.13, publication for public hearings, as set forth full in this ordinance.
Thank you. We go to gen item number 18, frustrating emergency ordinance also involving proposed amendment to the city charter.
An emergency ordinance provide for the submission to the electors of the City of Hamilton, Ohio at the general election to be held Tuesday, November 3, 2020. Proposed amendment to the city charter, the provisions of Article 5, administrative service, Section 5.03, removal of officers and employees, as set forth full in this ordinance.
We go to gen item number 19, frustrating emergency ordinance involving, emergency ordinance involving proposed amendment to the city charter.
An emergency ordinance to provide for the submission to the electors of the City of Hamilton, Ohio at the general election to be held Tuesday, November 3, 2020. Proposed amendment to the city charter, the provisions of Article 5, administrative service, Section 5.03, removal of officers and employees, as set forth full in this ordinance.
We go to gen item number 19, frustrating emergency ordinance involving, emergency ordinance involving proposed amendment to the city charter.
An emergency ordinance to provide for the submission to the electors of the City of Hamilton, Ohio at the general election to be held Tuesday, November 3, 2020. Proposed amendment to the city charter, the provisions of Article 5, administrative service, Section 5.03, removal of officers and employees, as set forth full in this ordinance.
We go to gen item number 19, frustrating emergency ordinance involving, emergency ordinance involving proposed amendment to the city charter.
An emergency ordinance to provide for the submission to the electors of the City of Hamilton, Ohio at the general election to be held Tuesday, November 3, 2020. Proposed amendment to the city charter, the provisions of Article 5, administrative service, Section 5.03, removal of officers and employees, as set forth full in this ordinance.
We go to gen item number 19, frustrating emergency ordinance involving, emergency ordinance involving proposed amendment to the city charter.
An emergency ordinance to provide for the submission to the electors of the City of Hamilton, Ohio at the general election to be held Tuesday, November 3, 2020. Proposed amendment to the city charter, the provisions of Article 7, Department of Finance, Financial Procedure, Section 7.01, duties of Director of Finance, as set forth full in this ordinance.
We go to gen item number 20, frustrating emergency ordinance, another proposed amendment to the city charter.
An emergency ordinance provide for the submission to the electors of the City of Hamilton, Ohio at the general election to be held Tuesday, November 3, 2020. Proposed amendment to the city charter, the provisions of Article 7, Department of Finance, Financial Procedure, Section 7.01, duties of Director of Finance, as set forth full in this ordinance.
We go to gen item number 20, frustrating emergency ordinance, another proposed amendment to the city charter.
An emergency ordinance provide for the submission to the electors of the City of Hamilton, Ohio at the general election to be held Tuesday, November 3, 2020. Proposed amendment to the city charter, the provisions of Article 10, Department of Civil Service, Sections 10.03H, civil service rules, as set forth full in this ordinance.
We go to gen item number 21, frustrating emergency ordinance also involving a proposed amendment to the city charter.
An emergency ordinance provide for the submission to the electors of the City of Hamilton, Ohio at the general election to be held Tuesday, November 3, 2020. Proposed amendment to the city charter, the provisions of Article 10, Department of Civil Service, Sections 10.03H, civil service rules, as set forth full in this ordinance.
We go to gen item number 24, frustrating emergency ordinance also involving proposed amendment to the city charter.
An emergency ordinance provide for the submission to the electors of the City of Hamilton, Ohio at the general election to be held Tuesday, November 3, 2020. Proposed amendment to the city charter, the provisions of Article 10, Department of Civil Service, Sections 10.03H, civil service rules, as set forth full in this ordinance.
We go to gen item number 24, frustrating emergency ordinance also involving proposed amendment to the city charter.
An emergency ordinance provide for the submission to the electors of the City of Hamilton, Ohio at the general election to be held Tuesday, November 3, 2020. Proposed amendment to the city charter, the provisions of Article 10, Department of Civil Service, Sections 10.03H, civil service rules, as set forth full in this ordinance.
We go to gen item number 24, frustrating emergency ordinance also involving proposed amendment to the city charter.
An emergency ordinance provide for the submission to the electors of the City of Hamilton, Ohio at the general election to be held Tuesday, November 3, 2020. Proposed amendment to the city charter, the provisions of Article 3, the Council, Section 3.07, rules of council, Section 3.08, quorum voting members, Article 5, Section 5.04, council not to interfere in appointments or removals, and Article 18, miscellaneous provisions, Section 18.02, financial interest in contracts, et cetera, as set forth full in this ordinance.
We go to gen item number 17, frustrating emergency ordinance also involving proposed amendment to the city charter.
An emergency ordinance provide for the submission to the electors of the City of Hamilton, Ohio at the general election to be held Tuesday, November 3, 2020. Proposed amendment to the city charter, the provisions of Article 3, the Council, Section 3.07, rules of council, Section 3.08, quorum voting members, Article 5, Section 5.04, council not to interfere in appointments or removals, and Article 18, miscellaneous provisions, Section 18.02, financial interest in contracts, et cetera, as set forth full in this ordinance.
We go to gen item number 17, frustrating emergency ordinance also involving proposed amendment to the city charter.
An emergency ordinance provide for the submission to the electors of the City of Hamilton, Ohio at the general election to be held Tuesday, November 3, 2020. Proposed amendment to the city charter, the provisions of Article 3, the Council, Section 3.07, rules of council, Section 3.08, quorum voting members, Article 5, Section 5.04, council not to interfere in appointments or removals, and Article 18, miscellaneous provisions, Section 18.02, financial interest in contracts, et cetera, as set forth full in this ordinance.
We go to gen item number 17, frustrating emergency ordinance also involving proposed amendment to the city charter.
An emergency ordinance provide for the submission to the electors of the City of Hamilton, Ohio at the general election to be held Tuesday, November 3, 2020. Proposed amendment to the city charter, the provisions of Article 3, the Council, Section 3.11, when ordinances and resolutions take effect, and a new Section 3.13, publication for public hearings, as set forth full in this ordinance.
Thank you. We go to gen item number 18, frustrating emergency ordinance also involving proposed amendment to the city charter.
An emergency ordinance provide for the submission to the electors of the City of Hamilton, Ohio at the general election to be held Tuesday, November 3, 2020. Proposed amendment to the city charter, the provisions of Article 3, the Council, Section 3.11, when ordinances and resolutions take effect, and a new Section 3.13, publication for public hearings, as set forth full in this ordinance.
Thank you. We go to gen item number 18, frustrating emergency ordinance also involving proposed amendment to the city charter.
An emergency ordinance provide for the submission to the electors of the City of Hamilton, Ohio at the general election to be held Tuesday, November 3, 2020. Proposed amendment to the city charter, the provisions of Article 3, the Council, Section 3.11, when ordinances and resolutions take effect, and a new Section 3.13, publication for public hearings, as set forth full in this ordinance.
Thank you. We go to gen item number 18, frustrating emergency ordinance also involving proposed amendment to the city charter.
An emergency ordinance provide for the submission to the electors of the City of Hamilton, Ohio at the general election to be held Tuesday, November 3, 2020. Proposed amendment to the city charter, the provisions of Article 5, administrative service, Section 5.03, removal of officers and employees, as set forth full in this ordinance.
We go to gen item number 19, frustrating emergency ordinance involving, emergency ordinance involving proposed amendment to the city charter.
An emergency ordinance to provide for the submission to the electors of the City of Hamilton, Ohio at the general election to be held Tuesday, November 3, 2020. Proposed amendment to the city charter, the provisions of Article 5, administrative service, Section 5.03, removal of officers and employees, as set forth full in this ordinance.
We go to gen item number 19, frustrating emergency ordinance involving, emergency ordinance involving proposed amendment to the city charter.
An emergency ordinance to provide for the submission to the electors of the City of Hamilton, Ohio at the general election to be held Tuesday, November 3, 2020. Proposed amendment to the city charter, the provisions of Article 5, administrative service, Section 5.03, removal of officers and employees, as set forth full in this ordinance.
We go to gen item number 19, frustrating emergency ordinance involving, emergency ordinance involving proposed amendment to the city charter.
An emergency ordinance to provide for the submission to the electors of the City of Hamilton, Ohio at the general election to be held Tuesday, November 3, 2020. Proposed amendment to the city charter, the provisions of Article 5, administrative service, Section 5.03, removal of officers and employees, as set forth full in this ordinance.
We go to gen item number 19, frustrating emergency ordinance involving, emergency ordinance involving proposed amendment to the city charter.
An emergency ordinance to provide for the submission to the electors of the City of Hamilton, Ohio at the general election to be held Tuesday, November 3, 2020. Proposed amendment to the city charter, the provisions of Article 10, Department of Civil Service, Sections 10.01D, Civil Service Commission, and 10.02, classifications, as set forth full in this ordinance.
We go to gen item number 23, frustrating emergency ordinance also involving proposed amendment to the city charter.
An emergency ordinance to provide for the submission to the electors of the City of Hamilton, Ohio at the general election to be held Tuesday, November 3, 2020. Proposed amendment to the city charter, the provisions of Article 10, Department of Civil